Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting in the Burlington City Council. It's today, October 16th, 2018. I'd like to take a moment to ask the governor to please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Let's take a moment. We're thankful for this day that has been given to us and for its opportunities and its challenges. We ask for strength, insight, wisdom, and guidance as we forge ahead, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Amen. This time we recognize Assistant City Clerk, Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning the items.
Before council, our minutes from the October 1st work session and the October 2nd city council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has been approved. We have one new business add-on item, item six, to waive bulk limb yard waste collection fees. Do I hear a motion to approve this add-on item?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved. Next is the adoption of our agenda. Before council is the agenda with the add-on item, do I hear a motion to adopt that agenda?
Make a motion we adopt the agenda with the add-on?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to approve budget amendment 2019-16 to allow Burlington Fire Department to use donations received since the start of fiscal year 1819 to be allocated to the Fire Prevention Division as requested by their donors. Item B, to approve budget amendment 2019-17 to allow the Burlington Fire Department to use donated funds to send two officers to Mexico for cultural development and awareness through an opportunity with the North Carolina Global Initiative Group. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
They're moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved. We have a number of public hearings this evening. I have public hearing number one. A public hearing has been set to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for 119 Colony Avenue voluntary contiguous annexation. At this time, we recognize City Engineer Todd Lambert. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Tonight, we're here before you and also Joe Calo is here representing Mr. Crenshaw. This is not your typical annexation request, being a single house on 24 acres of property within the city or adjacent to the city. So we're still in negotiations and working through all the details. So tonight, it's been requested that we continue to the public hearing to November 6th.
November 6th. All right.
And I can be available for any questions you have, or Mr. Calo is available for any questions you have of the applicant.
Any questions from council? All right. Thank you.
Do we need a... Continue.
So motion...
Second.
Okay. Motion is to continue this until November 6th. Do I hear any discussion or comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Item two, a public hearing has been set to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for 1034 North Graham Hope Dale Road, non-contiguous voluntary annexation. This time, we recognize David Abiel, Assistant Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Tonight, we have before you utility request for water service and also a voluntary non-contiguous annexation agreement. Valid petition for annexation has been received and certified by the city clerk. Notice of this public hearing has been properly advertised October 5th. As mentioned, this would be a non-contiguous annexation, given that the lot is three parcels away from our current city limits, but given its close proximity to the existing city limits, all city services would be available to the property. The petitioner is here, and this is a public hearing. Staff will try and answer any questions you may have, and if you feel it's appropriate, it would be right to adopt an annexation ordinance after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions from council prior to the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room?
Make a motion we close the public hearing?
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion from council regarding this request?
We adopt the annexation ordinance effective on October 16th, 2018 at 11:59 PM.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion regarding the motion as stated? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's passed. Thank you very much for coming. Item three, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from R-15 Residential District to CR Conditional Residential District to allow for the construction of a new healthcare facility for Twin Lakes Continuing Care Retirement Community. The properties are located on the north side of South Church Street, approximately 1,000 feet from University Drive, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 106888 and 106943. This time, we recognize Director of Planning, Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request for rezoning for the Twin Lakes Continuing Care Retirement Community to rezone two parcels, as you see here in the hashed marks, from R-15 Residential to CR Conditional Residential. This will allow for construction of a new healthcare facility for the Twin Lakes area. This is a conceptual plan, what you have in your packets. TRC will have final approval of that plan, making sure it meets with all our requirements. The two parcels that you see here will be absorbed into the original master plan for Twin Lakes. The original use conditions will be a part of the rezoning, and during the meeting that we had with Planning and Zoning Commission, no one from the public spoke in opposition, and it was unanimously recommended to council, and of course, has staff recommendation as well. And representing Twin Lakes is Mr. Frank Longest.
Welcome back, Frank.
Two of you in low chairs.
I feel your pain.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Frank Longest, Attorney here in Burlington. We have the pleasure of representing Twin Lakes here tonight about this rezoning request. The formality is that we are requesting the Massey property and the Williams property to be rezoned from R-15 to the conditional rezoning. The staff has been most helpful. I would like to recognize that because this is a complicated issue, and it, because of TRC and other matters that come into play, this is not just plain easy things, but the staff has spent a lot of time with us, and I wanted to thank them. City Manager has helped us. Nolan Kirkman's helped us. Joey Lee has helped us, among many others. But the purpose, again, is to rezone, but because of that rezoning, the staff was the opinion initially that our conditions to the applicable property which we want to merge into, that the matter ought to be looked at from the beginning. So you took the 2013 conditions and then have implemented other conditions that are applicable to this particular project consisting of a currently initially planned 104-bed healthcare facility. You'll note that the facility as proposed is all internal on the properties of Twin Lakes. There is no public access to this facility from South Church Street. So there is no, in my opinion, issue with regards to traffic or entry and access. It would be by the same means as there now. Some people would call that the visitor center. Some people, like myself, would call it the guard gate. But the matter really is that because of the previous conditions, they had to be reviewed by TRC. It's my understanding that we have achieved that meeting in the minds, and that at this point in time, the only issue is this NCDOT as to their approval as to the widening of Church Street. Mike Nun gave us some good news the other day that evidently the initial finding is that NCDOT likes the right-of-way width that both the city and Twin Lakes likes. So our real concern is if there's a widening of the right-of-way, that that would be a very material fact and a great deal of expense to Twin Lakes. Because of the area, even with the two lots being placed in the toll area, it would be extremely tight unless we move some things around, and at this point, that's very expensive. Not to take any more of your time, but I'd be glad to introduce Pam Fox to make her available for any questions y'all may have about the project. Also, we have the architect, who is the main brain behind this project, can answer any and every detail that you want. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions from council prior to the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this project. Yep?
Excuse me, did you say that Church Street would be widened or not widened?
There is a current DOT widening project at Church and University Drive that they referenced.
So between University Drive back toward Burlington would be widened, is what you're saying?
There's... Mike Nun and staff can provide you with some specific details to the project, but yes, it's primarily focused on the intersection at University Drive and South Church Street. You want to just mention?
Yes, there's a DOT pending project. It's not part of this project as well. It'll be widened from actually University intersection with Church Street all the way down to the Westbrook intersection. So that's a DOT project that's funded, has been funded prior to this project, but will take into effect some of the right-of-way on this site.
And what would it turn into?
It's going to turn into four-lane divided in some sections with a median. You'll have turn lanes. You also have sidewalks. You'll have a multi-use path.
Similar to Madden Street.
Yeah, it'll be a widened improvement. It started out at the focus of the capacity of the intersection of University and Church, but the state felt like they needed to connect it down to Westbrook. So it's one continuous project. So there'll be improvements along the corridor, not just at the intersection, but all the way down to Westbrook. And that should be right-ofways in 2019, construction in 2020.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Could you state your name and address just for the record?
Rodney Barbie.
Rodney Barbie, and your address just for the record.
119 Rammer Lane.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak?
Another question?
Yeah.
Just concerning the Twin Lakes area there, would that be landscaped down the road? Or will it just be open with the building out in the open?
There's a landscape buffer, if you wouldn't mind.
Trees? Where you're going down the road, you would see...
Can you pull up a picture of the landscape by framing?
Would the traffic coming through?
It's going to be landscaped.
Landscaped, like trees in front of the road and covering it? And no entranceway into that? It's going to be another area?
Correct.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this request?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning request as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's passed.
Make a motion that we approve this request based upon the consistency with the comprehensive plan, and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second to the statement of consistency?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Statement of consistency has passed. Moves us to our next item, item four. Thank you very much to the team, to Pam, to all of y'all for coming out tonight. We look forward to the project and seeing the improvements along Church Street. Item four on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider an amendment to the City of Burlington zoning ordinance, section 32.9, table of permitted uses, section 32.11, off-street parking and loading, and adding section 32.10.VV, that's Victor Victor for Electronic Gaming Operations. This time, we recognize City Attorney David Huffman.
Mr. Mayor and council, as I've mentioned with you, I spoke with you, each one of you today, we're going to ask that you take this off altogether, and we're going to make some modifications to the language in the, that we had proposed to more closely coincide with the UDO proposals that are coming down the pike later on, and at that point in time, we would simply just re-advertise it again.
May I move we remove it and be brought up at a later time at an appropriate time?
Just a second. Any questions regarding the motion to remove? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's passed. Thank you, Attorney. Next, we have our new business. We have two items of new business tonight. City council will discuss and consider a resolution in support of the education bonds for the purpose of improving economic opportunities and the overall quality of life in the City of Burlington. This time, we recognize City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, council members have been provided a resolution in your packages, resolution in support of education bonds for the purpose of improving economic opportunities and the overall quality of life in the City of Burlington. I'd be happy to read that in the record if you would like, or if council would like to dismiss that part of it. We can just jump to what the resolution declares, or you can feel free to answer. I'll try to take any questions, or if you want to have any discussion, feel free.
Thank you, if you wouldn't mind reading it into the record.
Okay. We'll be happy to. Whereas the Alamance County Board of Education has proposed a bond package of 150 million for the purposes of updating and expanding the capacity of the Alamance Burlington School System, ABSS, and whereas the Board of Trustees of Alamance Community College, ACC, has proposed a bond package of 39.76 million for new and expanded facilities and programs, and whereas the Alamance County Board of Commissioners has approved both measures in those full amounts to be put before the citizens of Alamance County for a vote on Tuesday, November 6th, 2018, and whereas the City of Burlington supports improving economic development opportunities and the overall quality of life of the city through enhancing all local educational institutions and their facilities, programs, and services, and therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Burlington supports both bond measures for the purpose of improving economic development opportunities and the overall quality of life of the City of Burlington, adopted by the City of Burlington City Council on this date, the 16th of October, 2018.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council regarding this?
Mayor, I'd like to make, you know, when we were first presented the resolution, I looked at it, thought about long and hard, and I'm a big advocate of education, and I think anything that we can do to support, you know, improvement of facilities and programs, you know, that I believe this body should weigh in. And it goes without saying that obviously the better education our citizenry has and our youth, you know, will have, it will bring economic opportunities, it will increase the cost of life, you know, kind of straight from the resolution. So I just, I just hope people will go and approve, you know, come November 6th. So that's, I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you.
And also, Mayor, I, you know, I don't know if anything in recent history has been more critical to this community than this particular bond packages, these two bond packages, not only in reference to our younger children, our high school students, and also, but the wonderful programs that ACC provides for all ages. And if we, you know, really do want our young people to be competitive in the environment going forth, it's the responsibility of all people in local government to try to give them the best opportunity. It has to start at this level. So I certainly would echo Councilman Ward's comments.
Other council discussion or comments?
Well, I can weigh in here as well. All three of my children attended the public schools in what was then the City Board of Education, and I also served on this, that school board. And the promises that were made was that the county, the city schools would continue to be maintained in the same way that they had been when it was a city school system. And that has largely not been true, and there have not been many things to, pretty much maintained and kept it habitable, but there haven't been any real upgrades, and we need a new high school. It's, sometimes growth is painful, but if you're not growing, you're dying. And environments play an important role in education. We need to be proud of our school system and have our children feel a pride in the buildings where they're going to school. And as far as Alamance Community College, I think we've seen an extraordinary movement in the direction of helping us provide economic development opportunities by training the citizens in our community in ways that some of us have trouble even figuring out what those are. But they've done amazing things with what they have, and they're asking to keep that momentum going. So I'm fully supportive of this resolution.
Yeah, I too would like to sort of echo in with Kathy's statements. Kim and I have had three children that have gone through the public school system in Alamance County, and the education level that they received, I could not be prouder and more satisfied. The facilities was another issue. So this is definitely something that we as a community have got to invest in. There's been lots of data, I think on their website, it shows how the money is anticipated to be distributed, but that's only a sort of a hypothesis. There's going to be community forums, as I understand. There's going to be municipal input, as I understand, which further adds to my support of what the community needs, and that there's going to be a shared voice if this thing is approved, and I certainly hope that it is. Our comprehensive plan states our need for a stronger educational system, and that's important. And if you think back to the community colleges, simple, similar to what Kathy said, it's, that was instrumental in us converting from a textile community into other avenues of employment that we have evolved to, and if without them, that just wouldn't have taken place. There's no telling where we would be from a, from an unemployment standpoint and for businesses coming into the area. So it starts with good facilities and being able to have educators that are proud to be involved, and they have the atmosphere that they can conduct their business with those that are in their classes, and it's up to us as elected officials to support that, and I'm very pleased that there's going to be some municipal input into how the money is spent down the road.
Thank you, Owen, for your comments. I'm proud to echo those and support those. As I share with the community frequently when I'm out speaking, education is the number one factor that drives prosperity in our community and continued growth in our community. And there's often not very much that our city council can do these days to help fund education, but I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the citizens of Burlington to voice their support for education and make an investment in the facilities that y'all talked about and that we are blessed to have in our community and across the county. And to invest in those facilities and the programs there to help make sure that we have exceptional economic and educational opportunities for all of our citizens, both at ABSS and ACC. So I'm proud to help support this bond referendum. Do I hear a motion from council to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda, item six, city council will consider a request to waive bulk limb yard waste collection fees as well as bulk limb size restrictions for the period of October 15th, 2018 through November 16th, 2018, in an effort to assist residents in disposing of woody vegetative debris caused by Tropical Storm Michael. This time, we recognize City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we had the storm last week, and we're in the aftermath of cleaning that up. Evan Brown, our Sanitation Director, is here with me this evening in case you have any questions. What we're asking is if council would consider approval of waiving the bulk limb and yard waste collection fees, as well as our bulk limb size restrictions for the period of October 15th, beginning yesterday through November 16th, and that's the Friday before Thanksgiving. That's an effort to assist residents in disposing of all the woody and vegetative debris that was created. I think we've all seen it on the curbs. Maybe some of you are involved in taking some to your own curb. I've been doing that as well. That, obviously, storm came through over the, over the weekend and last week. So I think it is similar to what we have done for a, ice storm, severe ice storm we had in 2014, and obviously, you know, our staff's goal and the city's goal is to provide good service to our residents and help them with unusual occurrences like this, and try to make life as simple and easy as we can for folks when bad things happen. So Public Works Team believes we can handle these materials using our in-house forces, so at this point, we don't anticipate engaging any contractor services. Evan and his team have done a remarkable job in the two days this week, and they are hitting each route and finishing, even if it means finishing right around dark, but they're staying out to keep each, hit each route each day, Monday and Tuesday, and they've done a wonderful job doing that, and we want to applaud them for that. So if council is so inclined, we would request that you, if someone would be willing to make a motion to approve waiving the bulk limb yard waste collection fees, as well as our bulk limb size restrictions for the period of October 15th through November 16th.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Mayor. Director, a second.
I do have one question. Would you mind explaining some of the things residents can do to help get those limbs? I've seen some pretty big trees down out there, so if you could explain kind of what residents can do to help our crews out and get those real limbs available for pickup?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. One thing that really would help us out is if they would bind up the sticks, because once you put them in a pile, and our guys are manually grabbing them, either with their hands or with a pitchfork, they fall apart if it sticks. If you could wrap some twine around there and tie them up, it makes it, you know, a couple of seconds compared to four to five minutes at a stop. That's pretty much it, and just making sure it's at the curb, at a safe location, there's no low-hanging wires or limbs or anything close to it, because there's boom trucks, we've got to get in there.
Okay.
Might put it in a can, or the size, what's the...
Right, yeah, yeah.
Talk through those things, Steve.
Okay, so, so yeah, if they're containerized, not over 50 pounds for the, for the yard waste stuff. The bulk pickups, anything getting picked up by the knuckle boom. Our regulation normally, we like to say six inches or less as far as diameter. It can, it can be a little bigger than that. The truck can handle that, and we're prepared to handle anything larger than that with , with Street Division helping us out.
Okay. So if folks do have some pretty big limbs that they can get out to the curb, we can start to troubleshoot it and figure out...
Right.
...how to take care of it.
Yes.
Excellent.
Evan, was this part of your contract when you came?
I think inclement weather was in there, so yeah, I was ready for that.
Want to make sure.
Excellent. Appreciate that explanation.
No problem.
All right. Any other questions from council regarding this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. I have one public comment request, but this time I've recognized WS Novak. Welcome.
Up there?
Yep. If you can come on up the microphone. You've got five minutes, if you wouldn't mind just stating...
Can I do this?
Yeah. If you wouldn't mind just stating your address for the record.
3540 Harris Road. Put it out on Harris Road by the lake.
Sure.
And there's a 100-foot buffer along the lake there for the, I guess, you know, to keep chemicals out of the lake. And when I built the house out there, I went round and round with the planning department and the lake committee about where the buffer was. I built my house 102 feet from the lake, so I'm within the 100 feet. Piece of property came available for me to buy, and I came back down and they told me, you know, on that piece of paper, it's a 100-foot buffer. And so I didn't buy the property because it wasn't big enough. Well, the man's building a house there now, and he's saying the buffer's 50 feet. So section 32.2 of your general reg says 100 feet, so how do we go with 50 feet?
Appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
And if you go to the other page, it says that no residential lot shall be less than two acres out there, and that's not two acres. And I hate to see somebody start a house. I tried to explain this to him before he started building the house, and the house is almost complete. So how do I, what do I do now?
I'd say, manager is there. Person, or you wouldn't mind taking this item up?
Yeah, we'll definitely follow up with you. Just want to know somebody...
Oh, I came downstairs where you have the buzz in. I guess they've had a lot of trouble, you know? I mean, you gotta, Mother May I, can I remember to them? And that man down there said he was the boss and that it was 50 feet, but he couldn't show me on a piece of paper where it said 50 feet. So what's going on?
Hey, I don't have that material in front of me, but we'll certainly look into that. Yep, okay.
You can have that.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're talking about Lake McIntosh, right?
Yeah, I live on Harris Road. You know what the dam is?
Yeah.
That's the road I live on. That's the road, beautiful place, absolutely beautiful, and I spent a lot of money on the land and more money on the house, and if anybody wants to buy a nice house out there, I'm selling it. It's only three years old.
So your house basically backs up to the lake, right?
Yeah, yes, sir. And this one does too. You know, and I would have bought the property, and I could have, if I had taken some of my property, I probably could have fit a house there, but this was not enough. It's not the two acres, and it wasn't 100-foot buffer. Because I even had the health department out there, you know, to do the site survey for the septic, and those guys are like, how are you going to fit a house in here? It's a 100-foot buffer. I said, well, that's why you're out here looking. So how do I get in contact with you or what?
This is Mr. Bob Patterson, who's our water resources director. I see him coming forward to maybe.
Yeah, I can't speak to the lot size. I don't, I don't deal with that. But the Jordan Lake buffers superseded that buffer rule, which the Jordan rules are 50-foot, and that is why there was a 50-foot buffer applied to that lot.
Well, if you go to the Burlington website and you pull that up, it's 100 feet. How am I supposed to know as a customer or a resident of Burlington that it's, you guys have changed the rules without printing it?
I think we didn't. You're saying the Jordan Lake rules that the state made.
The statewide rules.
Yes.
Okay, but as a resident, how do I, how do I know you changed the rules?
I guess what I'm saying is we, we didn't change them, but I agree with you. Our website should be updated to reflect if that's the case.
Okay, well, then how, when I came down here twice, because this was last June, and when I built my house three years ago, it was 100-foot then. Daniel Schaffner was the guy's name. I think he went over to the fire department now. He thought, and he came out there twice, because I said, how do I measure it? He said, just pull the tape. I said, Daniel, I need your full name and pay number legally, because if I make a mistake, you know, you guys are going to say, well, you put the house in the wrong place, take it down. So where, where's the level playing field? Because the people that bought that are contractors. Obviously, they know somebody who told them, you know, oh, this, because I came down and asked last June, and I asked three years ago, and it was 100-foot. How's it work for the little guy like me? Actually, I'm six foot five, so I'm a little bigger. Where's the fairness?
Let us get all of our folks together tomorrow. We've got multiple departments that will be involved.
And then what?
We'll give you a phone call tomorrow. I feel, look.
You have my phone number on there?
I'll get some. Just about to the end of the meeting, but I'm sure Manager Watkins and staff would be glad to meet with you if you've got a couple of minutes to stick around, and they can get all your contact information. I agree with what you said. Something went awry, but we appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
No, it didn't go awry. I got lied to. There's no awry. I got lied to twice, almost three times. There's no awry. There's no misunderstanding. It's, I mean, I hand you both a piece of paper. There's no lie. It's just a lie.
Thank you.
We'll exchange contact information, and we'll get on it in the morning.
That concludes our public comment period. Do I hear any council comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank the staff for their work over the last, what now, four days, five days. I know, I saw them out Thursday night in a couple of places moving some real large trees off the streets. And I'm not sure if, you know, in these kind of situations with ice or snow, people can see it, but that storm coming in so late in the day, I'm, you know, I'm very thankful to them to, as they blocked streets off with power lines down, because so many people simply could not, could not see just the danger out there. And the, some of the size of the trees that was lost, the email that our street department sent out, I'm not sure where that tree was.
I don't know.
But that was about as large a stump as I've ever seen in this city.
Staff reported a stump 20 feet by 20 feet, the root ball.
Twenty by 20.
Twenty by 20 feet.
And just going around, it was amazing how fortunate we were with some of the large trees, with some, it's some significant damage, but how some of the large trees seemed to fell between houses and not on houses. That was pretty amazing. But certainly, I know it took significant efforts by the street department, by all Public Works, police, fire, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday throughout the weekend with power being out. So thank you.
Do they counsel comment?
A couple of quick events that I want to mention next week is Belong in Burlington, which recently received a National Savvy Award, recognizes excellence in city communication with new residents. Belong in Burlington event will be from 6:00 PM till 7:30 on Wednesday, October 24th, right here in City Hall. And then, as approved tonight, bulk waste collection fees are waived until November 16. Belong in, or Burlington's 125th anniversary included a student art competition, and those art pieces are on display at the Paramount Lobby until October 20. So folks are welcome to go check those out. And then it's October, so we've got our Scoop Tacular event in downtown Burlington on October 26th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, including a costume parade and trick-or-treating through downtown. And then our wonderful Dark in the Park event is October 27th, always popular from 5:00 to 8:00 PM with fireworks at 8:00 PM. So we're looking forward to seeing folks out and about. Please be safe out there in your trick-or-treating, drunk-or-treating, and other Halloween activities. So without any further ado or other comments, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Owen, for coming.